Good evening. I would like to call to order the May 10, 2023 regular school committee meeting at 5:31 PM. Tonight we're meeting in the high school library located on the second floor of the high school. I'd like to thank Tewksbury Telemedia for accommodating this move. We have moved due to the advanced placement testing, which is currently located in LG One, and we thank you all for understanding. At this time, I will entertain a motion to convene in an executive session, a non-public session, to discuss the approval of May 10, 2023 executive session minutes and collective bargaining pertaining to the TTA teachers. The school committee will reconvene in open session after the executive session. Do we have a motion?
Also moved.
The only thing is, I will, we will approve the April 12, 2023.
Call the date.
Yeah.
Today is May 10.
I'll second that, but with that caveat.
Thank you. That's an error on the agenda. Thank you very much. And so a motion by Mrs. Bea Joni Smith, a second by Mr. Russo, and for a roll call vote, Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well, and the school committee will reconvene at 6 PM.
We reconvene our regular school committee meeting now at 6:06 PM, April 12, 2023. It's our regular school committee meeting. Again, tonight we're meeting in the Tewksbury High School library. And I'd like to say thank you to our Tewksbury Telemedia for responding to the last-minute change. We have advanced placement testing currently set up in LG1. Thank you all for understanding. If we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance? And Rania, do you mind leading?
Of course.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So these microphones, I'm told, are just really for telemedia. So if any of us are speaking today, try to project if we can. Okay, our announcement, the May 10, 2023, regular school committee meeting will be televised and recorded, may be viewed live on Comcast Channel 22 and Verizon Channel 34, or on youtube.com/TewksburyTV. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask, is anybody recording tonight's meeting? Thank you. Seeing no one, I will now move to our recognitions. And Mrs. Terrio Regan, if you'd like to introduce.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I'm very proud to have with us tonight Commander Vinnie Aliva from VFW Post 8164. Joining Mr. Aliva is Mr. James Williams and Ms. Mary Williams, also of VFW Post 8164. They are here tonight to honor and recognize and celebrate Brooke Bunyan, the state-level second-place winner of the Voice of Democracy essay. Brooke, we are so proud of you. Again, how many years is this now? Six, I think? Six years. Your commitment to this topic and just your eloquent writing is just so amazing, and we thank you. We hope you've been grooming someone so that we continue to have state winners here, but we celebrate you. We're going to invite you and Mr. Aliva up to the table here so the camera can catch you, because I think, Ms. Vinnie, you'd like to say some words for Brooke and her family who is here joining us, Mr. Paul Bunyan and Ms. Chrissy Connor.
Okay, I'd like to, first of all...
Well...
Yep.
First of all, I'd like to thank the school committee and the superintendent for inviting us today. Brooke, what can I say? I mean, you took the thunder out of my speech, so that's fine.
Sorry, man. It was worth saying again.
I've known Brooke since sixth grade, and every year but one, she's come in for a second or third place. So it's quite an accomplishment you've done. I'd like to let everybody know what the actual Voice of Democracy is and the Patriot Pen. So the purpose of the Voice of Democracy in the Patriot Pen is a national essay contest that is conducted annually each year during the fall term. Both contests is designed to foster patriotism and to give the student the opportunity to voice their opinion and address their responsibilities to our country. The veterans of foreign wars and its ladies auxiliary truly hope that every school in our country will provide the opportunity for its students to take part in this competition. Through classroom study projects and special assignments, students will be motivated while writing and speaking to express their opinion about their personal obligations and better understand the rights and responsibilities of being an American. The Voice of Democracy audio essay competition is given from ninth to 12th grade high school students the opportunity to voice their opinion on their responsibilities to our country. The Patriot Pen essay competition is to give sixth- to eighth-grade students the opportunity to write an essay on the annual patriotic theme to express their views on democracy. The Voice of Democracy theme for 2023-24 is what are the greatest attributes of our democracy. All students can download this off the computer on vfw.org. And the Patriot Pen theme for 2023-24, how were you inspired by America? Again, both these can be downloaded from the vfw.org page. So, once again, I'd like to congratulate Brooke. And I'm not sure, were you going to go to the banquet on Saturday?
There's a banquet on Saturday.
All right. Well, anyway, it's the 2012, 2024, if you'd like to go.
Okay.
But I took their check anyway. This is from the District 15, which is the next step after the post.
Right.
And they did not award this to you yet, but I took it out, and there's a check for $115.
Thank you.
The state, you won, what, $4,000? Did you get that yet?
I think so.
Yeah, okay. So, but...
You don't want to give it to me again.
But again, I'd like to present to you this certificate. You get enough of these certificates, you can do wallpaper in your dorm. So...
Perfect.
Veterans of foreign wars of the United States and its auxiliary Voice of Democracy Certificate of Merit presented to Brooke Bunyan in recognition of excellence in the Voice of Democracy Audio Essay Competition. You have been designated an outstanding spokesperson for freedom and witness whereof, signed by myself, Vincent Aliva, and Mary Williams. So congratulations again.
Thank you.
All right.
Brooke, we have a recognition for you as well.
Yeah, you're not done yet.
And then we'll call Mom and Dad up. We'll get a quick picture, too, if that's okay with Mom and Dad.
This is a resolution of recognition, whereas Tewksbury Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 8164, Post Commander Vinnie Aliva and Senior Commander Jimmy Williams invited students in grades nine through 12 at Tewksbury Memorial High School to participate in the 2022-23 Voice of Democracy Scholarship Competition. And whereas Brooke Bunyan has been a contender in the essay competitions, beginning with the Patriot Pen competition in sixth grade, and successfully continued to participate in the Voice of Democracy competitions during her high school years at TMHS. And whereas Brooke, a senior at TMHS, submitted an audio essay to VFW Post 8164 for the 2022-2023 Voice of Democracy Scholarship Essay Competition on why is a veteran important. And whereas Brooke won the post-level competition, advanced to the district level, taking first place, and finished second in the state-level competition. And whereas Brooke has brought great pride, recognition, and honor to herself, her family, the Tewksbury Public Schools, and the town of Tewksbury. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the exceptional performance of Brooke Bunyan in the 2022-23 Voice of Democracy Essay Competition.
Thanks.
We could have our VFW commander and guests with us, and Mom and Dad will get a picture. And then if you want to get a picture yourself.
Jason, you wait on capture. We're going to face that right.
Run away, God.
All right.
Perfect.
Do you want to get a picture?
Thanks.
I can take that boy.
She wants a fish with those.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next, we have Rania Elwahi is back with us this month. So if we could have your update from the high school, please.
Of course. So, good evening, everyone. First of all, good job. Congratulations, Brooke. So, to begin, I have some club updates. So, she's the first donated money this year to Gambia. They donated $2,000 in order to aid in funding women's education. And they usually donate each month, I mean, each year. And yeah, so International Club also, they hosted a town cleanup, which was last Saturday, May 6, at Pine Cemetery in Tewksbury. Student Council is currently in the midst of setting up a multitude of activities for Teacher Appreciation Week. And each day of this week, there have been different gifts and like goodies planned for teachers. For example, today at lunch, they give everyone ice cream, and they had donuts the other day and pizza. The esports club won the state Rocket League championship. And the TMHS Theater Company put out, they put out an outstanding performance of Beauty and the Beast on April 27 through April 29. Some sports updates I have include that the sports season is coming to a close, with this month MVCs are taking place, and many are beginning to have their final games, meets, and events. And on April 28, the TMHS Track and Field Team did amazing outstate relays. The girls' team had placed sixth overall, and the boys' team placed second. Varsity Baseball has also won two games recently, and they're playing Drake it tonight. Also, there is a track meet tonight as well. Some miscellaneous things I have include that AP exams have been going on since May 1, and finally, tomorrow is the last AP exam, which is AP French and AP World. MCAS testing has also been going on for the past few months, and sophomores will be taking their final math MCAS on May 16 and 17, while the freshmen will be taking their biology MCAS on June 6 and 7. And finally, the TMHS hosted an art show on May 5 and 6, which many students took a part of, and it's still outside in the cafeteria, and you could see, like, some really good art. So that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Rania. Any questions?
Thank you.
No.
Okay, we appreciate you being here. And next, I would ask the board to consider taking an item from Old Business for the TMHS travel. That would be item 17A. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Yep, to move it to the present, to current. Yep.
Correct, yes.
Mrs. Terrio Regan, is there somebody here to speak on that?
There is me, but Ms. McDermott will speak.
So we don't need to take that out of order.
Oh, yeah, you could wait if you want. Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, so I will leave that where it is. But maybe we could consider 18A from New Business, where we have our principals here with us to look at the 23-24 pre-K through grade four elementary student handbook.
So moved.
Yep. I will second that as well.
So a motion by Mrs. Bea Joni Smith, a second by Mr. Russo, to take the item out of order. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, no opposed. So I would then, Mrs. Terrio Regan, I'll let you introduce, please.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, members of the committee. We do have with us tonight Principal Terry Gerish of the Heathbrook School and Principal Jay Harding of the Center Elementary School. They're here in case you have any questions. You have an updated summary sheet, or a change sheet, of the 2023-2024 PK through 4 elementary handbook, if you remember, and you've been doing this a while. We have created a collaborative, one-consistent handbook for all of our PK through 4 schools. You've had this packet. There's only been one current change, and that's a health change. And I just want to be clear when I say this, it is the notice and procedure for dealing with head lice, specifically, correct, Ms. Gerish?
Yes, the...
Yes.
Public Health...
Incommunicable.
In commission.
Yeah.
Head lice is communicable.
Okay, and that change...
All of supporting documentation.
That's right.
So you no longer have to do...
So those bullets are the same, other than that one added one that's in your updated summary, and Ms. Johnson has put that out in the packet as well. So this does require a roll call vote, a collective roll call vote. And what happens is, if anything should change in the handbook from now until publication, when the new school year starts, we'll update you on those changes.
Okay. Any questions, comments on the handbook?
I have one question, no comment, more so in terms of the head lice update. Just making sure that we acknowledge our policy, make sure that it aligns with what the handbook says.
Correct.
And maybe move that as one of the more top priority ones going forward.
I think that's fair.
Are you specifically referring to the wellness policy?
We have a school committee policy on...
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I just want to make sure it's clear. Yeah.
And this, yeah, and this new guidance, actually, on dealing with head lice is not as stringent as we had had in our procedures in the past.
Understood. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's fair. Anything else? And I have no questions or comments. I want to say thank you for your work on this every year. I think it's a big lift. One thing I would like to suggest is, I know as the year goes on, things come up, and I know you're constantly tweaking this. This is not, you know, crucible set in stone. So I think I would be open to a motion where we allow the authority to, Mrs. Terrio Regan, to make adjustments to the handbook as needed throughout the year, and as long as we are updated as a...
Thank you.
Just for, you know, point of order and like that. So is anybody willing to entertain that?
I'll make the motion to grant Mrs. Terrio Regan permission and authority to update the student handbooks, provided that she updates the committee.
Perfect. Is there a second?
I'll second it, but I do just have a follow-up clarifying question to that. And when the handbook goes out, students' families sign off on the handbook that they understand, do updates go out when those happen?
They would.
To families as well.
And sometimes it's as simple as a typo or a name.
Sure.
But other times, it's a state...
Yeah.
Regulation that's changed.
Yep, okay.
And we'll communicate that.
Mr. Russo would be to put it in one of the...
Small updates.
Put it in one of the newsletters, and then update it on our website as well.
Understood.
Both directly, and then also on the website.
Okay, thank you.
But also we need updated translations.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
So, for the first motion on the floor, all in favor of granting Mrs. Terrio Regan authority to update as needed with the committee being updated, please say aye.
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 And no opposed. That passes unanimously. The second would be, do we have a motion to approve the handbook as presented?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Russo, a second by Mr. Parsons. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And with no opposed, that passes unanimously, Mrs. Johnson.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you for attending.
It's okay. Yeah. Was that a roll call vote?
It's a roll call?
Yeah.
It says roll call vote. I'm not sure, but...
So typically, if it's regarding money, it's roll call?
Right. I'm not sure you need a roll call, other than vote.
Yeah, I think, I think we're... All right, so moving on, we have no presentations. Next would be our citizens forum. Is there anybody here that would like to speak? No? Okay. Well, thank you for attending. So we'll move on from citizens forum, and on to our approval of minutes, and with our clerk, Mrs. Anderson.
Yes, I motion for the committee, for the, I motion the committee for the approval of the regular meeting minutes dated April 12, 2023.
I would second.
Okay. A motion from our clerk, and a second from Mrs. Bea Joni Smith. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And with no opposed, that passes. And the submission payment of bills, also with our clerk.
Yes, I make a motion to approve the payroll period ending April 13, 2023, in the amount of $1,522,565.67.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, and we have a motion by Mrs. Anderson, and a second by Mr. Russo, to approve and certify the payroll period ending April 13, 2023, in the total amount of $1,522,565.67. This is a roll call with Mr. Parsons. How do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well, and that passes unanimously.
I make a motion to approve the payroll period ending April 27, 2023, in the amount of $1,468,514.55.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
And a second. So we have a motion by Mrs. Anderson, a second by Mr. Russo, to approve and certify the payroll period ending April 27, 2023, in the total amount of $1,468,514.55. Roll call vote, Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Thank you very much. And now for our superintendent and staff reports, Mrs. Terrio Regan.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. The first of my updates brings us back a little bit to COVID-19 guidance. I do want to share with you that as of tomorrow, some of these guidelines have been changed. I'm going to read just a little from a memo we received from the Department of Public Health. As the state public health emergency ends on May 11, 2023, and COVID-19 prevalence across Massachusetts is no longer high, the Department of Public Health, the Department of Public Health's Public Health Emergency Order directing universal face mask use for all individuals, including healthcare personnel in healthcare settings, will also terminate. So what does this mean for schools? And you do not have this most recent update, but it will go out in tomorrow's district newsletter. This quite simply means that face masks will no longer be routinely required in school health offices. So there is still guidance around positive COVID cases. So there are, is still guidance around positive COVID cases that hasn't, um, thoroughly changed, but we will get this memo into our newsletter so parents can see. Again, the big change is that to walk into the nurse's office at school, the routine use of a mask will not be, um, required.
Okay.
Uh, the second of my update is also in your consent agenda. I'm just so proud to tell you, and, um, of the Friday, April 14th, Tewksbury Memorial High School College Fair, uh, this is held annually and every single junior in our high school had over about an hour plus to visit with approximately 70 colleges and branches of the armed forces. Uh, I personally talked with some students that attended the junior college fair and it really gave them some direction and some thinking about where did they want to go? Um, you know, what did they want to do with their life after high school? And that's why we have this, but it did put them networking with different, um, different college admissions people. But what we realized is that, um, we could improve. We realize there's an opportunity here for some swag and some Tewksbury Memorial High School College Fair bags and things like that, as we watch kids juggle, you know, umpteen, um, folders and pens and all of that. So I had some nice talks with some of our juniors and they said they'd be happy to help out next year, make it a better experience for our upcoming juniors. So I want to thank Ms. Karen Baker O'Brien and of course the Tewksbury Memorial High School Guidance Department, including the admin assistant, Chris Ferndudo. It really was a wonderful event and, um, we're so grateful that they continue to have that. Also on the high school, um, note here, you'll see an update from NIAS, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. This is the, uh, governing board that grants us accreditation, so I'm pleased to tell you the Tewksbury Memorial High School is fully accredited still. Um, and the CPS really praises our high school for their progress and the development of their school-wide rubric, the curriculum overview and unit plans, especially those that we've posted and, uh, shared transparently through our website, the collection and analysis of data and the surveys of current and graduated students on that decision-making and then the inclusive process and plans for developing our vision of a learner. So we'll, they'll be visiting again in 2028, but this process and the cycle starts again in 2025. Um, in the meantime, our high school will be digesting and learning to understand the new CPS standards for our next, next cycle of accreditation review. Okay, um, okay, student listening sessions. If you remember, we shared with you last meeting, the comprehensive district review and the entry findings from our full year of meeting with stakeholders. And what, one of our follow-up, um, goals is to continue our listening sessions with students. Ms. McDermott and I have been doing that with students from grades five through 12. And I can tell you, we really have some educated student consumers of what we're giving them. And we've focused on really three themes with our students, um, belonging, if that's our number one priority, what are students telling us? What is their sense of belonging? What does it look like, feel like, sound like? They're giving us examples of when they really feel they belong in their class and school and times where they feel like that, that could improve. We've also then, um, layered in engagement and instruction. And our students really have a good sense of what fully engages them, when they feel fully engaged in the learning process and when they feel they have full understanding of learning. And this, those two things go hand in hand, is what we're hearing from students. They really can put a name on it and really identify what instruction feels like to them and when it really is relevant. And then of course, that, the, uh, topic of homework comes into this because that is a topic that's very important to students and families and we're hearing from students, when is it relevant, when is it helpful and when is it adding to their level of stress? So we're continuing with those listening sessions as we said we would and our students are helping us with those pieces of our district strategic planning. In fact, some of our now senior, but soon to be alumni will help us with that strategic goal setting around some of these topics. So it's been highly enlightening, the best part really of our last few weeks earlier in the year, but also now, we, I, I wish we could do this every day. We really, we really learn a lot from our students. Um, okay, uh, spring brings so many end of year celebratory culminating events. One of my favorites, as Rania talked about, is the district art show. Last Friday and Saturday was our 39th annual arts event. I want to thank all of our art and music teachers because they are truly the wind beneath all of our budding artist swings. It's their passion and commitment to sharing the love and for the arts that really, um, lead our students into whether it's that career path or that joy of art. Bravo to all of our students. I'm not even sure where the camera is because, I mean, it, it, not only is it entertaining, they, it, it's moving. And I was able to see parents at last night's town white pack meeting that had pictures of some of that artwork and some of those performances on their phone. It moved them so much. So again, uh, bravo to all of our students and on that note, bravo to our WIN drama team. I want to just share with you, if you didn't get a chance to see it, the WIN middle school participated in the 2023 Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild's, uh, middle school drama festival, representing our district in the statewide event. Five of our students took home, uh, all-star company awards, Blake Adams, Grace Kennedy, Kevin Daigle, Cordelia Zwerk and Jake Gigante. And we also brought home Tewksbury's third gold medal in theater, uh, for their production of Fire Exit. The, these group of students also deserve another gold medal just for their respectful and pride, uh, filled hosting of this event here in Tewksbury. So again, bravo to those students and thank you to their drama director, Mr. John Deprima, for his consistent commitment to the performing arts for our students. Yesterday, because the high schools shall not be, uh, put in the corner, um, we were informed that the Tewksbury Memorial High School Theater Company were nominated for 19 different TAMI awards. Last year we were nominated for six, so 19 is quite impressive. The TAMI's are the Massachusetts high school version of the Tony Awards, where schools are judged on their musical. As you know, our spring musical was Beauty and the Beast. It was absolutely amazing. We certainly wish all of our high school drama team, uh, the best. We'll inform you after the May 21st award ceremony how they did. And again, bravo to those drama students and thank you to their amazing directors, Celeste Pellegrino and David Moffett. All right, um, I also, uh, hope you enjoyed seeing the pictures that were in your packet of the tree planting ceremony on Arbor Day. Um, National Arbor Day was celebrated on, was it April 29th, right? That Friday, was it 29th? I'm sorry, or 28th?
This is 28.
Um, and our deepest gratitude goes out to everyone who made this day such a lovely experience. You can see on the first picture, the, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Zarulas, um, performed with their jazz band throughout all six lunches at the Center Elementary School and had actual, uh, student, a student pianist of Mrs. Zarulas, uh, share, little Mr. Rosahan, sharing his, um, musical talents during one of the lunches as well. So that was an amazing, if that wasn't amazing enough, all the students got to participate in the final planting of these three trees. You probably know and thankful to our select board, we are a tree, uh, city and due to the donation from our town manager, three trees were planted out in our outdoor classroom, in our courtyard, that will signify just the growth and development of many, many students to come at the Center Elementary School. So we want to thank the Tewksbury Garden Club, as well as Al Mancini, Sue Young and many of those members who really helped to bring this event to our Center, Center Elementary School. Um, those trees will be growing in our courtyard for many years to come to symbolize, as I said, just the, uh, prosperity and growth of all of our students through that school. So that concludes my updates for tonight.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions, comments?
Uh, well, thank you very much for that update. Uh, just, uh, maybe one comment, um, and then one question, maybe more for, for, for you, Madam Chair. Um, so on the, uh, college fair for, at the high school, so fantastic feedback, um, from just some of the kiddos that I know and talk to regularly. Um, and I think one thing that they, um, really appreciated and respected was the fact that, uh, some of the underclassmen, sophomores got to, got to attend as well, so I thought that was really good feedback. Uh, and then secondly, uh, Madam Chair, more for you, um, the topic of homework has come up, you know, a little bit more frequently, so I would just maybe ask, maybe when we start getting back into a regular policy committee mode, you know, meeting mode, um, maybe that one sort of rises to the, to the surface a bit, uh, quicker than some of the others.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
That's fair. Yeah. And just a comment too, um, I had some outreach from a student, um, at the WIN who's doing their, um, doing a project on homework. So, and I, I did reach out, um, in offer to, you know, to meet with them.
Good.
Ideally with Mrs. Terry O'Regan.
Yeah.
And my partner on policy, just to, um, see if we could be helpful in any way.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, good, good point. Anything else? All right, thank you for the update.
Sure.
All right, and now our, Mrs. McDermott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so just a quick reminder, um, our high school student representative already mentioned the MCAS schedule, but I just want to remind everybody, um, we do have the, um, math and STE MCAS assessment happening, um, and then we will have later in June, the high school will be administering the biology test, so be sure to check, continue to check the calendar. Uh, standards-based report card update real quick, the committee continues to make great progress. Um, as you might have guessed, I'm excited and really passionate about this project, so we're working to get a completed draft of the new report card together that I look forward to sharing with all of you in June. So that's the hope there. Um, we had a wonderful visit from some, um, neighboring teachers. I want to thank some of our pilot teachers for welcoming a large group of teachers and administrators from Westwood Public Schools who are also piloting the same two ELA programs that we're piloting, so they wanted to come and, um, take a look at how it was going here. So the kindergarten teachers, Heather Grace and Katie Buck, first grade teacher Lisa Tremonti and fifth grade teacher Kim Bruff opened their classroom doors and allowed about 10 of us to come in and, and watch a lesson and mill around. The visiting group was so appreciative. I can't say enough about how well the students did in that environment with so many grownups in the room. In fact, in some, at a few different points, the grownups were doing a little more talking than they should have been and I was just so impressed with how the students just kept paying attention to their teacher and, and doing what they needed to do. They were welcoming of, of, um, unfamiliar teachers coming around and, and speaking to them about, about what they were working on. It was a lot of fun. Um, I was just really, really proud of our students and our teachers. We are, um, on track to launch our new, um, absence management system, which is called Frontline, and that is scheduled to launch on Monday, this Monday, May 15th. The system will allow our staff and our substitutes to use an automated system rather than calling in their, um, absences, kind of the old fashioned way. So I really need to thank, um, Caitlin Paquette, who is our payroll specialist. She has been working diligently, setting up the backend of this system and I'm quite sure she had no idea what we were inviting her to when we invited her to that first meeting. And in all honesty, I didn't realize what I was inviting her to either. So I'm extremely grateful, uh, she's really been incredibly helpful and dedicated. Um, I also want to thank the TTA for their collaboration as we moved, um, toward this system and all of the teachers for embracing this new way of documenting absences and requesting substitutes, keeping our fingers crossed for a nice, smooth launch on Monday, um, but so far, so good. In honor of Teacher Appreciation Week, we want to thank all of our teachers for the tremendous effort that they put into making every day count for all of the students at TPS. And we also want to thank the school packs who truly go above and beyond to ensure that our teachers feel all the love and appreciation throughout the appreciation week and of course beyond. So thank you to the packs for that. And that concludes my update.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
I have a question on Frontline. So if a teacher makes a, uh, entry and says they're going to be out, who gets the notification? Does it go to the principal?
Yes, well, it, it depends on who the person is, but yes, in that case, it would go to the principal, your building principal, yep.
And then do they get an approval noted, like what's the.
Yeah, so if it's a sick day, they don't need to have it approved, it's just, it's a notification to the principal. A substitute is then, um, alerted that there's an opening and can accept that opening online, even on their phone with, with the app, which is great. Um, and then the principal can be, it can, well, it's live, so the principal sees how many filled, how many unfilled, who's coming in for who and can, you know, stay on top of managing all of that, because that's a, definitely a management system.
And likewise, for example, I approved, um, several vacation days that our principals were looking to put in for the summer. So Lori, myself, or Dave respectfully would get, um, absent notices for the people that we oversee and supervise. And we can oversee the whole district, but we're approving those directly, uh, related to us.
Yeah, absences seem pretty straightforward. In terms of substitutes, um, does the principal have authority over putting the substitute where they go or do they see like so-and-so is out, I want to fill that class, so-and-so?
Teachers have the option to have, to, um, make a recommendation. If they have some favorite substitutes, they can recommend those substitutes, um, but ultimately the principal can certainly, the substitute would sign up for who they want. We do reserve the right at times to move them around. Substitutes quite often, often don't prefer that and we try to stay away from it, but when there's a better situation for students, we will make that decision when it's right.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah.
And, Mr. Russo?
Uh, I, so I think my question was actually, and so it's not just for teachers, it's for the whole district.
Whole district.
Yep, okay. And then secondly, um, you mentioned the new standards report card and those meetings are going well, so is the intention, assuming everything goes well, to, uh, enroll that out for the 23, 24 school year for the first term, basically? Okay.
Yes, that's the hope.
Yep, thank you.
Actually, just thought of another question. Sorry, the program is interesting. Um, does it track their time that they have available and time they have left, so.
Their accruals, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Sorry.
No, it's great.
It's like coming to my head as I'm.
Yeah, for sure.
Mr. Parsons, anything?
Just going to say, um, seeing Frontline from the teacher perspective, um, very useful program.
Yeah.
Hopefully make it on everyone's lives a lot easier.
Yeah, and it's super user-friendly. Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
So, so are there people that are doing that work today and does that go away and what would they be doing on this?
Yep, so they, the people who are doing that, um, currently help, hold a job in the district.
Yeah.
And so that's kind of an added, um, stipended position that they have, so we're keeping them on for the remainder of the year and kind of the ask was, there will be people that are a little, um, you know, afraid of maybe technology or not as comfortable with the technology and if they could support them to learn how to do it, not necessarily do it for them, but to support them to learn how to do it, then that would be great. And they also have, um, a lot of direct contact with the substitutes, which is really helpful.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Um, I, if I may, Madam Chair, just clarify something. We still, although substitutes can sign, we sign up and, and interview and vet every substitute that works for the district still.
Yeah.
It's, and then we'll put the substitute into Frontline to be able to pick jobs that open up.
Yes, I'm sure they can't be submitted into the application until they pass whatever checks.
Through us.
Right.
That goes through the superintendent's office.
Give them the invite.
Okay.
Is this a subscription service, the Frontline?
Yeah.
Oh, great, okay. So any updates and things like that come through the company?
Yep. Yeah, and the support right out of the gate has been amazing. They've been great.
Right, great.
Lot of other districts, a lot of other districts use this. A lot.
I'm glad we're catching up.
Yes, me too.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Libby.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just to call your attention to an item that's in your consent agenda, the letter on mosquito spraying that we get annually from the Central Mass Mosquito Control Project. Just by way of explanation, they require us to update our integrated pest management system with the any chemicals we may use, or they may use at our request if we, if we call for mosquito spraying, or the town asks for mosquito spraying while students are in session. So we'll get that updated on our integrated pest management system. John Marchand manages that system for us. He's aware that we got this, and we'll be updating those chemicals and make sure, I guess the point of that integrated pest management system is make sure we're not using chemicals that will have reactions with other chemicals that aren't supposed to be mixed. So they want to know everything we're using in, in, and around the schools. So that, that will get updated by the end of the week, I would say. We got results of our end-of-school-year audit from Powers &amp; Sullivan, the auditing firm that we use to audit that program. The end-of-year report is a pretty comprehensive financial report we do every fall in the business office, where we report every dollar that we receive and every dollar that we spend. It's categorized, grant money, our budget money, revolving money, any fees we collect, all has to be reported on this end-of-year report, and we get audited on it as well. We received the audit report back this week with no findings. So good news on the audit front, and we have multiple copies available if you want one there.
Thank you.
Available here. Last bit of good news, we, our contract with Alphabet was expiring in June for our after-school, before-school, and summer programming that they provide for our families in town. So based on the anticipated value of that contract, we needed to solicit bids for, to continue to provide that service to the town. So we had sent our bid specifications out to eight companies from the state bid list who are licensed to perform this type of service. And we received two responses back last week. We requested, the way requests for proposals work is you ask for their proposal separate from their financial package. You, and you typically evaluate on their qualifications first, and then you go and look at the, the financial side of the picture. So we, our team looked at the specifications that the two folks submitted without the financial piece. All unanimously chose Alphabet as the most advantageous for the community. Oh, and we also added in to the specification this year, the opportunity for some enrichment programming at our elementary schools, after-school, sort of themed programming that we used to run through community education, which we don't have that department anymore. And we had heard from some folks that, that had been a, a missing item in our, in our schools, so we'd like to bring that back. Things like theater, archery, just games in the gym, different type activities. We included that in the specification, too, to try to get some of those activities back up and running in our elementary schools. So Alphabet was chosen as the, as the better of the two proposals, and also got good news when we opened the financial side, that the way it works is we get a percentage of their overall tuition. And the increase from our previous proposal, where we got 10% of their tuition, to this proposal, they went, they upped that to 13% going forward. So it's a little better financial package. We hope to get some more inclusive programming for families, and we're very happy with our relationship with Alphabet right now. So good news on that front.
Will the cost for families go up?
So we put in the specifications, what the current prices are, and that the prices couldn't escalate more than 2% per year. So there is a, you know, a potential for a slight increase, but no more than 2% per year.
Okay.
And the prices that they submitted with their financial package were the same prices as they currently charge. The prices they proposed for next year.
Right, okay. Good, thank you. Did you have anything else?
That was it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, thank you, actually. So this is a question, actually unrelated to any of the things that you raised. I actually just, just given sort of a couple items that are on the news this week with transit and busing, strikes, and unionization, et cetera, of Tuxbury Transit, I think, what, three months ago now, maybe? Anything that we need to be concerned about there from Tuxbury's standpoint? Because obviously, that could have a big impact on our families, our students, et cetera.
Nothing.
I know it's out of the district's control, obviously, at the end of the day, but obviously would have a direct impact on the district and our families and students.
Yeah, I mean, we have our proposal, we went out to bid on transportation a month ago or so.
Yeah.
And received our, our bid. It did have an increase, and, you know, they factored in the potential for unionization, so we're, we're pretty much locked in to our rate, at any rate. So I don't know what the, the, how the union aspect could play into it.
Okay.
That may change, you know, how our folks operate, but we'll have to kind of wait that one out.
Sounds like you're keeping a pulse on it, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Do we think that any of, because I still continue to see a lot of issues and getting feedback around late buses, et cetera?
Yeah.
Do we think that the absences are due to any of the other activities going on?
No, I don't, what we're hearing is that the new management is offering more paid time off than the previous management, and drivers are taking advantage of that. You know, laws have changed recently where people earn paid time off, you have to grant employees paid time off in all positions. So, you know, the present company is, is following those regulations, and, you know, the employees are just taking advantage of the rights that they have.
Does the present company, are they working on a backup plan to manage giving, allowing more?
Yeah, they're, well, I mean, they're doing, doing some hiring recruitment exercises, particularly over the summer. Their goal is to have the, our fleet of 24 regular drivers in line, and I believe they're looking at, they want to have five spare drivers to cover on a daily basis. Right now, our spare drivers are driving every day.
Right.
You know, they're folks that don't necessarily, that's not really what they signed up for. They kind of signed up to be substitutes, and.
Okay.
They're pitching in and taking a route every day, but they, I think a lot of them would rather be kind of on call.
Okay. We all set?
Yes, I was.
Anything else, Mr. Parsons? Mr. Beal?
I'm all set, thank you.
Mrs. Anderson, again.
Sorry, one more question. The audit that you presented, was that, what year was that based off of? Because you just got the results, so was that for 2022, 2023?
It's for fiscal '22.
Okay.
So we report on fiscal '22, which ends June of '22. We file the report in the fall of '22. They typically audit between December and February in that timeframe, and then they get the report back to us and they file it with the state.
Okay, thanks.
And they're coming in next week to audit our federal grants. So.
Okay.
Next audit's up soon.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Mrs. Beal, join me, Smith.
I don't have any questions tonight, thanks.
I have a couple of Alphabet questions. So I just, from my own knowledge, I guess, when we went from community service to Alphabet, I, I was under the understanding that the Alphabet was through the town, but it's, it's through the schools? So the contract, we, the district does the contract, or is that through the town?
We did this one, yeah.
Okay.
The last one was done through the town.
Okay, so I'm, I'm not that far off. And then the summer program, will that also be through the schools?
Yeah.
Okay. And plan is the same as what they had last year to operate out of Livingston?
We had quite a few, about 100 families, and some à la carte, some all week, I mean, depending on what the family needed.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it worked out. They were pretty happy at Livingston. We had some tents set up, and with the building itself, it seemed to be enough space for them.
Great.
Madam Chair, if it pleases the committee, Alphabet has already suggested they'd love to come back and share with you this summer, you know, how the year went and what they did make available for families over the summer.
Yeah, that was actually my next thing I was going to say. I think it was lovely having them last year and having that update. I would like that a lot. And then I think also, I could also raise this when they come in, but I, I think it would be great if any of us could visit the program at some point. I think it would be helpful to see it in action. I've seen it a little bit at the Center Elementary School, when they're kind of, you know, closing up the day, so that would be great. Thank you. That's it for me. Anything else from anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Libby. And the consent agenda. Mrs. Terry O'Regan, was there anything in the consent agenda that we haven't already discussed?
No, no, I think we've covered what's in there and, and more.
Okay. Any comments or questions on anything in the consent agenda? Do we have a motion to accept?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to, to accept the consent agenda as presented. Do we have a second?
Yeah, second.
Okay. Mrs. Beal, Joni Smith has seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And with no opposed, that passes unanimously. Next, we have our school committee member reports. And again, I will defer to, we have Mrs. Terry O'Regan or Mr. Libby, if you want to, if you wouldn't mind, give us a little update on anything that's new with the elementary school building committee.
I really should pass this to Mr. Libby, but suffice to say that we have some up to a certain amount that the committee voted on in approval at the last building committee meeting to follow through with some of the, whether it be punch lists or remaining needed items. That amount, I, I can't remember what, what was voted on as a total amount, but that will be the work that the committee moves forward and through the summer is, you know, whether it's signage or additional chairs, desks, things like that. So, so the project is coming to, you know, end, so to speak, but there's still some commissioning and follow-through with MSBA to be had.
Right. And we sort of have, the, the committee asked that we sort of have the summer be the, the time to end the actual completion of those projects, so they gave us the, sort of the up-to amount, which I can't remember what that is either. But the, and then the deadline at the end of the summer to complete the work. Things like the traffic patterns out front, there were some improvements to the crosswalks and the, and the signaling in, in the front of the building, in front of, on Pleasant Street, some, some more fencing, some more furniture work. You know, once you get in the building and live it for a little while, you realize there are some things that, that we needed, so. Things like that, that we've been kind of pecking away at with, either through the vendors that are on the project, or, or using our own people.
Great. Any questions? All right, and next, we would have the Tuxbury CPAC.
Sure, I can go forward with that. Our last meeting was very productive. There was a lot of good conversation around some things that have been happening in the schools, and some ways that the CPAC wants to be involved with helping remediate some of those. One of the things that came out of it was talk of a reintroduction of a meeting with district leadership, whether it's with Ms. O'Regan or Ms. McDermott, or the Assistant Director of Student Services, Candace Theret, whoever it may be, maybe it rotates, to really open that communication back up and start those conversations of things that they're looking at or things that they're seeing and getting them talked about.
Yeah, I thought that.
So that was one thing. CPAC board nominations were due this week, and they'll be voting on their new leadership board at their next meeting, which is on May 18th, at their regular business meeting. Before that, this Saturday, there's a social meetup at 10:00 a.m., I believe the time is at, and that's at Kids Connection in Billerica, and that's for all of their membership, anyone who wants to attend. I think it's supposed to be nice, so should be a nice morning. They have a lot of shade at that park, it's fenced in, and that location has been picked for that specific reason. Couple more updates, there's a parent workshop on Wednesday, 5, May 17th. That's in LG1 here at the high school, and that's focused on de-escalation techniques and regulation. There's a link to register for this workshop, and that is on the CPAC Facebook page, but you could also reach out to either myself or to the CPAC themselves to get that link and register for that. There were initially two sessions that were booked, 5:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m., and I don't know if they've nixed one because of attendance or signups, but that is something that we could get clarified as well.
Sure, we can get some, a notice out to the families if, if one of them is canceled.
Perfect. And then last on the CPAC is there's a family engagement parent workshop on Tuesday, May 23rd. This is a virtual presentation, and there's also a registration link available for those interested.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, comments on the CPAC activities? No. And, okay, moving on to Wellness Advisory Committee.
I'm actually going to defer to you.
I was going to say.
I went in, in lieu of Mr. Russo, but I will defer to you to give a little update there.
Yeah, so this was my first one. I attended as well. It was just, you know, introductions and kind of catching up to where Mr. Russo has been at with the committee. We did talk about extending the meeting timeframe going forward, so we'll have more meetings. We did set our times and meeting dates for the remainder of the year and even through next year, and we will start to communicate those, expanding the committee to additional representation from the district with the, with, you know, advisory from Ms. O'Regan, who we should have there. In addition, we had some conversations surrounding general mental health, things that have been going on in the district, ways that we can bring in more support for our students, for our staff, and, and so forth. I'm trying to think of what else we covered. I didn't have my notes from that one, I apologize. I was thinking I'd be giving the update the next one.
Yeah, the only thing I think also was helpful is our lead nurse, Kelly Constantino, discussed the, our policy on wellness, and I think that's something you guys have been working on for a bit, that she was going to bring forth when that's completed. She and Deb Bogford have been looking at that. And then also Maria Rogirio, which was formerly Frontline.
Yeah.
She was there as well, and had a lot of great input and perspective. So I hope that, to see that committee grow.
Looking forward to it.
It's very promising.
Yes.
And any questions for wellness? All right, and our policy subcommittee, we have a date for May 25th to meet, so we already have a couple items here, those that have been on our kind of shortlist anyway. We've really, really, really been dialing in on some of those policies that we need to put on a shortlist, kind of a moderate list, and then a long-term list. So we're all up to date in terms of looking at what we've already looked at. MAS-C has given us a nice list of things that they've been updating, so trying to just keep it small, because it's, it's a big task. So if anybody has anything else, other than what we've already discussed tonight, which is homework and LICE, we're open to getting those on our list wherever they need to be.
Can, can we just tie that into some of the other handbooks at the school building level that are going to be forthcoming for approval over the next couple of months, I would imagine, for the new school year? So things that are, I know are tied to things at the high school level, the Wynn level, whatever they might be. I don't know, just I know that there's been some hot topics there as well, whether it's parking or other, other factors.
Okay, yeah. As you think of them, please let us know, and we, we certainly can add that to our list. So, but nothing else to update there. Moving on to some old business, which we did not move, which is item 17A, and that was our. was our travel, was it TMHS domestic travel request.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and you have all of the information in your packet. Speaking on behalf of Bailey Mahoney, who is unable to be here tonight because she's actually celebrating her own graduation, so a huge congratulations to Dr. Mahoney for earning her doctorate, so that's exciting. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on her behalf, but I believe you do have all of the information in your packet. Unfortunately, only three students signed up for the original trip to California, but there was a much higher interest was expressed for a trip to the national parks, especially based on current freshmen, and she already has commitments from about 15 students to run the national parks trip. So this does require a roll call vote. We're asking that the school committee approve the TMHS travel committee request to switch the previously approved domestic trip to California during the February recess 2024 to a domestic trip to Bryce Canyon, the Grand Canyon, and Zion National Parks during the 2024 February recess. And again, this does require a roll call vote, and I'd be happy to go on this field trip as well.
Any questions on the national parks trip?
Just one, actually, just as it relates to transportation and lodging. So I did notice in the packet that it did state for smaller groups, we will have parent volunteers drive the students to the airport, to and from the airport. So I'm assuming any of those parent volunteers, they have to meet sort of our policy as it relates to chore check, et cetera, and they're not...
Or they'd be the parent of the student.
Or they'd be the parent of the student. Okay, just, yeah, just double checking that. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. To Bea Joni Smith?
No questions.
Mrs. Anderson?
I did have one question with the chaperones. Are those teachers or people in the district or are they parents?
Teacher chaperones.
Teacher chaperones, right?
It's typically our teachers and an administrator, sometimes and/or a nurse, sometimes there's a parent chaperone as well, but typically teachers and administrators.
Okay, good.
And this, just Madam Chair, if you remember, this is in detail a trip that you'd already approved. It's so, it was so popular that this is why it came back, because the kids said, "Not that one, but this one," again. So I think the popularity and the, just the raving of how wonderful it was from our students that went last year have created a flurry of students wanting to do it.
I actually have a child that attended last year. It was pretty awesome, yeah, for her. I have siblings, maybe, who had a week off. And so I have no questions. Personal experience was very good with the company as well. But any other thoughts?
I'll make a motion to approve the trip as presented tonight in our packet to the national parks in February of 2024.
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Russo and a second by Mrs. Bea Joni Smith to approve the switch of the domestic trip from California to Bryce Canyon, Grand Canyon, and Zion National Parks during the 2024 February recess. All, Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
And Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well for unanimous vote on that trip, so. Good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. And then from, moving on to our B, 17B, is our school committee 2024 meeting schedule. So this was tricky. We did add the additional meeting in May, similar to how we have now, and then we also separated out our first budget workshop in January as a separate meeting, allowing that to be simply a budget workshop if needed. We also could add, if our agenda is heavy in January, we could add our mid-year review of the superintendent at that time, or we could use that for additional business if we chose. And if we choose, we could, and our January 10th is light, we could combine those two meetings. So I think that was, as Mr. Parsons, you mentioned, kind of almost more having a floater. That was the thinking there, so that's something to think about. And then also, there was a small conflict on May 8th. That'll be town meeting.
Okay.
So we won't be able to have May 8th. So we could either, if we look at May 1st, that would be three weeks out from the April 10th meeting, and then four weeks out to our May 29th. If we went with May 15th, it would be six weeks from April and two weeks to May 29th. I personally have a preference for May 1st, but I will open this, open to any topic of discussion on the calendar.
Yeah, I also, Madam Chair, if you may, I also agree that May 1st is probably a better timeframe. I think the end of May tends to be very heavy, vacations, Memorial Day, events that are taking place towards the end of the month. I think that keeping it towards the beginning and with the differentiator of time between the April and May and then moving forward is a better layout, in my opinion as well.
I agree.
Mr. Russo?
Sorry, I'm just looking at...
Still thinking?
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I'm just looking at the calendar. So if we're going to do May 1st, which I would also agree with my colleagues, the rest of my colleagues here, would that, would it make sense, also make sense to move the May 29th date to a week sooner? So that you have three weeks, three weeks, three weeks between April, May 1st, May, now 22nd proposed anyway, and then June 12th? So that you're giving that enough sort of room in between, whereas May 29th to June 12th is a two-week window, which is fairly quick.
Administration?
Certainly makes it easier to plan for and pull together the meeting, and I like that idea. So, and I think we, I heard the...
That's over here as well. So May 1 and May 22?
Yeah, from the May 8th, May 29th proposed.
Makes sense? Any thoughts, Mrs. Anderson?
No, I'm good with that. That makes sense.
Okay, all right. So Mrs. Johnson, that change would be, and we can vote on this, but that would be to take the May 8th and May 29th off the calendar and add May 1st and May 22nd. And is there a motion to approve that calendar?
So moved?
I'll second.
Okay, so a motion by Mr. Parsons, a second from Mr. Russo. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, so that was easier than I thought it was gonna be. Okay, and then the elementary school, oh, we have to do our appointments. So we have some subcommittees that our committee has members that sit on those boards, and so the elementary school building committee is a committee, a subcommittee of the select board, so we would need somebody who is interested in that committee to be nominated, and we vote on that person. And as Mr. Libby just explained, it sounds like that is winding down, so it shouldn't be as heavy a lift as it was when the committee started. So is there anybody that's interested in that?
Yeah, I'll express interest in that.
I would second Mr. Russo for, or nominate Mr. Russo for the elementary school building committee position.
Okay, is there anybody else with interest? Happy to second that for Mr. Russo as well. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I guess I'll say aye as well.
All right, congratulations. Did you, did you accept that?
Oh, yes, sure. I voted aye.
As you can tell, it's a big learning curve with, for me on the nomination process. Okay, so thank you for representing us on that committee.
Of course.
Next, we have our diversity, equity, and inclusion advisory committee. Mr. Parsons, you've been serving on this. Interest in this moving forward or...
Yep, so unfortunately I have to resign from my spot on the DEI advisory committee. I just can't make the commitment it's asking for, and I'd be remiss to keep that opportunity from one of my colleagues. It's a great board, does great work, has a great impact. Bombed, I can't make that commitment, but I'm sure someone on this committee can do much better job than me.
Thank you for your time served, especially as you were there for the inception and getting it started. So thank you for representing us on that. And then in terms of interest for that committee?
Madam Chair, I have just a follow-up question to that. So I'm not sure I'm clear on what the commitment is, because it seems like most of our subcommittees generally meet once a month or maybe even once every other month. So is this a commitment that was something greater than that?
Mr. Parsons, I've heard you...
It was once a month.
Once a month, okay, okay.
An evening?
Evening.
Yeah.
Typically six or seven.
Okay, okay.
Any thoughts on anybody who has interest in participating on this committee?
I'll, I'll make a motion to nominate Katie Anderson for the DEI committee.
And to do this proper, would you accept that nomination?
Yes.
Of course, yeah, thank you.
And is there a second?
A second. Katie's appointment nomination.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Anderson, for being willing to do that. The district security team, I think, is a much lighter lift. Mr. Russo, you've been doing that, and that is something where it's run by the district. It's completely all managed that way, but we were asked to have somebody that was just kind of a de facto person that would attend. And now you've been attending that, you've been saying that, so I'm gonna ask if that's something you want to continue doing, and is there any other interest from anybody else?
Yeah, I'm still interested in attending. It is a daytime meeting typically, usually around 8:30, 9:00, 9:30 typically in the morning. Maybe what, three, four times a school year, maybe at most? And so, yes, I am still willing to serve on that committee. I mean, it's, again, as you pointed out, made up of the district, there's our SROs, some other law enforcement, fire chief, et cetera. They're better equipped with security when it comes to our district in terms of just providing that, some thought from the, from the law enforcement side. So I think, to your point, it is, it is a lighter lift, and so I'm willing to continue to serve with the other commitments that I have as well.
Okay, I'm happy to nominate you for that. Is there any other interest from anybody that would like to do that? Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor to have Mr. Russo continue on the district security team, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, with no opposed, thank you, Mr. Russo.
I'm sure I have a question.
Yes.
Regarding subcommittee and appointments, in lieu of busy schedules and ensuring that we always have representation at these meetings, has it ever come up to have an alternate or additional person? Because some of these, we do meet a lot of times at night for some of these meetings, whether it's the CPAC or DEI or something else that would prevent you from being able to do one or the other, but if, you know, stars align and it allows you to go to one, has that ever come up, or is that a conversation that we need to have with the select board?
Yeah, so for our subcommittees, we have two people appointed, so I think some of the thinking in that was well before we were all on it, would be that, you know, if one person can't attend, there's always a backup, there's two people working together. For these committees that we just voted on, the first two anyway, elementary school building and the diversity, equity, and inclusion advisory are both subcommittees of the select board, so they would have to, you know, we're kind of going, and so we submit these names to the town clerk, and then they're formally kind of registered with the select board. So that would probably be a good conversation to have.
With them, because it would impact their quorum.
Right.
Right?
And voting rights.
And voting, correct.
So, so I guess if, at some point, we thought that that's something that would be helpful from our perspective, we would, you know, we could certainly reach out to them on that, but...
Correct. Our perspective would there is if they're struggling to meet quorums or meeting requirements to hold their meetings.
But certainly, I think with the district security team, if Mr. Russo could not make that meeting, I don't see any reason why any of us could, you know, fill in for you if you can't make it.
Yeah, I think I made everyone the chair, so good.
So, and then finally is the, our subcommittee grouping appointments. That is also in the packet, so we need to formally vote on that. If there's any issues or concerns that you want to discuss, or I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the subcommittees as appointed for our subcommittees.
Okay. I would second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, and with no opposed, that passes unanimously. Thank you for being patient while we took care of some business. And then moving on to our registration periods.
Okay, Madam Chair, what you have in front of you is the 23, 24, I'm just going, the four quarter registration periods for next school year, and I'm trying to get to that because this is informational only. You've already voted on the calendar. This is how we parse out the days, considering snow days, but we know that this is very important for parents so that we get that out there and get that posted to our agenda. I'm sorry, posted to our website. It's late at night. Gail's looking, what are you talking about? So that we can get this out to our teachers and so that we plan and Aspen for all of these changes in the quarters.
Okay. I would just like to say thank you. I know this year, those dates have now been put up on the website, and I think that's really helpful. I know the smores from principals often will include, you know, the term-end dates and things like that, but for families to be able to kind of look ahead, think ahead to, you know, some of these dates is helpful, so I appreciate that.
Great. Madam Chair, I'd be remiss if I didn't tell you, you'll be looking at another register period with standard space report cards for K4, but it's too premature to provide you with that, but when Ms. McDermott and potentially members of her team come before you in June on that, you'll hear the rationale. And if you've been in any other districts, typically that's a different register period than you'll see at high school or middle school.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Okay, and do we have to vote on this or do not?
No.
Oh, perfect, thank you.
Next item in new agenda will take a vote, or will require a vote of the committee. Currently, you know I'm the representative to our collaborative school, and that is the Valley Collaborative. This is an annual appointment that does require a vote of the committee.
Yep.
Okay, well, any comments or questions for the, for the Valley Collaborative?
No, I think Ms. Regan does a great job.
Yeah, and I'm happy to make a motion to appoint you to the 23, 24 school year at the Valley Collaborative on the board.
I'll second.
So a motion from myself, a second from Mrs. Bea Joni Smith. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
That you do on that. I mean, I think, having attended the breakfast there this year, really just, I like having that point of reference for what they're doing in those buildings.
Wonderful collaborative that works on behalf of our kiddos, so we welcome, want to attend the breakfast again this upcoming school year, just to hear about all the great work that they're doing.
Yeah. So school committee matters of interest. Anything for you, Mr. Parsons?
I do. One last thing to report out from the diversity, equity, and inclusion advisory committee. On Friday, June 2nd, at 6:30 p.m., there will be a Pride Lights event where a gazebo will be. Other than that, I have no other updates at this time.
That's June 2nd?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Russo?
Yeah, just a couple things. I just want to, first of all, you know, just, just really thank our teachers this week, especially with it being Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you really for all the things that you do. Thank you for the things that you go above and beyond for with our students, most importantly. And then really just honestly, I mean, it was already mentioned tonight, but I really just want to commend our Tucksperry High School drama team for the tremendous performance of Beauty and the Beast. It was, you know, it sent chills. They did a fantastic job, and not just the people on stage, but really everybody from soup to nuts that was involved in that. So I just want to, you know, you know, everybody that knows me knows, you know, you'll see me at the sports field all the time, but, you know, so it's very, you know, when I can get to those types of events that are non-athletic, it's really rewarding. So it was great to see that and witness that firsthand. And then lastly, I'm looking forward to, you know, attending some of the year-end festivities and, you know, at all levels of our district, which will be great, and I look forward to seeing, you know, many of our students and personnel and certain things. Thank you.
Mrs. Anderson?
I also just wanted to mention with Mr. Russo, the appreciation for the teachers I was able to help out at, one of the lunches that was given for the teachers at the Dewing School, and they were so appreciative of us just even providing them lunch, but we were really appreciative of all the work that they do throughout the year for our kids. The Beauty and the Beast, I brought my whole family, some a little bit begrudging. The Beauty and the Beast, I brought my whole family, some a little bit begrudgingly, but by the end of the performance, they were hooked, so they really kept all the kids engaged, so that was great. And I'm also looking forward to celebrating our kids across the district in a lot of end-of-year activities.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
I'm just going to say ditto for all of the stuff that they said and add a few more things.
Sorry.
That's fine, I just don't want to repeat, it's fine. I want to thank our PACs for all the hard work that they've done between the tree dedication and putting the effort into, you know, picking all those trees and the funding that they provided to this very busy time of year with field days happening at our lower elementary schools. These are humongous events and humongous undertakings with spreadsheets and color-coordinating t-shirts, and they're awesome. I spent a whole day at my daughter's school to do hers each year, and I love this time of year, but I would be, it would be sad not to mention how much work goes into putting this in and putting these on. The Center School has 170 volunteers or something insane and crazy, so tons of work that's going into that, and thank you to our PACs for all of that work that they're doing. Another thank you to the parents that volunteered for the WIN Festival that happened that day. I saw a few moms in Market Basket who talked about it. I knew it was happening but didn't really have all the logistics right, and I got my wires crossed with art show and festival, and I wish I was able to attend because I hear it was wonderful. And then with that, I want to just throw a shout out to our art teachers. That art festival takes so much work and so much planning to put that all together, and I kind of took a video as I walked through all the walls on like a speedup, and it was kind of neat to go back and look. The projects are incredible, the displays are incredible, it was packed, packed on Friday night. It was so cool. So shout out to our art teachers because there's a lot of work that goes into putting on that, that art display. That's it.
Perfect, thank you. Of course, I have all the same things to say, all the same shows were great. And then also Teacher Appreciation Week, of course, huge recognition there. Friday was Food Services Heroes Day. So, you know, thank you to all the people who are laboring over the food that they bring our children. But then also a couple things to mention, Kayla and I both attended the MAS C Day on the Hill last week, which was really, really nice. It was beautiful view, and we heard from some, some really nice legislators that are working on behalf of our students and working hard to bring good things and hopefully some additional funding to our district. So it was nice to hear from them, and thank you to the MAS C for having that. And then also, we all were able to attend the town meeting, and thank you to, you know, our administration over here for attending as well as you do every year, and thank you to the residents of Tewksbury for supporting, you know, the funding that we're asking for so that we can keep doing the work that we're doing for the students and the schools. So those are the things I had to add. Future community dates, May 17th, we have our school committee training workshop, and that will be at the Center Elementary. May 31st, we have a regular meeting back at the high school, and June 14th, we'll also have a regular meeting. Future Subcommittee and Advisory Committee meeting dates, Elementary School Building Committee is June 22nd, the CPAC Business Meeting, as was mentioned, May 18th, Wellness Advisory Committee, they actually do have a date in June. Do you remember what that was? And Policy Subcommittee, May 25th.
June 7th.
And the Wellness will be on June 7th. Some future agenda items, anything from anybody that you'd want to see the last couple of meetings before the end of the school year?
I think we've got it pretty packed already.
They're pretty packed.
They are really packed, yeah.
They are pretty packed. A couple of things that we can look forward to is, we asked our WIN Drama Program to come in with some recognition of their hard work, and then our esports did fantastic this weekend, so a lot to be proud of in the district, and so I look forward to some of those things and some recognitions that we have there coming up.
Madam Chair, if I could just add one more thing before we wrap up. We're talking a lot about the art show, and Ms. Regan and I attended the art show and the chorus and band concert, which was just, just a huge shout out to those kids. There was about 11 students in the choir, and I think about eight in the band, and it was real small, but a really attentive audience, and I was really moved by the family and the support among the students for, just while the, while the band was playing and the choir students were very supportive, and then vice versa, and I just felt like Celeste Pellegrino went just like above and beyond, and it felt like, even with such a small group of students, it felt like this enormous production. And I will say, I did play the song from Wicked for Good all weekend, because that was a song that they ended on, so I had that on my Spotify, so small but extremely entertaining, and I hope that that program will continue to, to build. A lot of those students were, were seniors, and I think we probably saw them, you know, for the last time at least here, so.
Yeah.
Toodles to them.
Thank you very much, I, yeah, good feedback. And I think that's all.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So a motion by Mr. Russo, a second by Mr. Parsons. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we adjourn at 7:33 PM.